Yeah. Do that. So it should hear it. Oh, now if I go to my Zoom box. My Zoom picture, wherever that is, it's hidden behind something here, right? Yeah. Um, the Liberty Player, do I play it? Record? Okay. Okay, okay. Okay. Pushing on. Thank you. Okay, okay, bye. Yeah, see you later. Check. Hello, where's my microphone working? Hi, Judy. Audio, audio.
Hello.
Hi.
No, I'm kidding.
The pressure always working. We'll figure.
I couldn't let me check. Oh, I can't. Could I check on my computer?
Hmm?
Can I check on my computer?
Yeah, but I don't.
Okay.
Hi Judy. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you, Audrey?
Great, thanks. Give your keys.
See myself walking across.
Stand up straighter.
Yeah.
Shoulders back.
Shoulders back.
Suck in that stomach the whole bit.
Thank you.
I'm just saying that's that's the drill.
Make sure to turn your microphones to green, please. Ready, ready? I have. We go ahead and call with the order. All calls shows all the commissioners present. You go to unscheduled citizen participation. Is there anyone in the audience who could talk about something that is not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to conflicts of interest. If any commissioners have conflict with any of the items on the agenda. No, sir.
Never will.
No. Right, hearing no benefits, we'll move on to the first item for discussion. This is a quasi judicial hearing. This a public hearing, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So this is Resolution 12. Twenty twenty five, consideration of a lot consolidation application. Located at one oh seven Perry Street and four oh five Mountain Avenue.
Hi Emily.
Hi, thank you Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, give me one moment while I share my screen. All right, and is everyone seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so tonight we have Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty five on the agenda. It is a lot consolidation located at one oh seven Perry Street and four oh five Mountain Avenue. Uh, so the applicant for this um, application is Edna Stoddard and represented by Diane. Uh, again, located at four oh five Mountain Avenue. The zoning is single family residential. And the request is to consolidate two lots into one approximately uh fifteen thousand square foot lot. Uh, so the lot consolidation would simply be vacating that shared lot line. The both properties are owned by the same um owner. Uh, for existing conditions, four oh five Mountain Avenue contains a single family residence and the adjacent lot at one oh seven Perry Street is vacant. There are no proposed site plan modifications at this time, so this uh consideration is just for the lot consolidation. The town town code outlines five criteria for lot consolidations. One being that it is a legal conforming lot. So this lot does meet all um zoning requirements within the single family residential zone district. Um, the second criteria is that no subsequent lots are created which this application is meeting. It results in just the one um consolidated lot. It, the third criteria is that the lot consolidation does not adversely affect existing access, drainage, utility easements, or right of way. Um, because this lot consolidation is not um. It's simply just again uh vacating that shared lot line and it doesn't affect access, drainage, utility easements, or the right of way. Um, the fourth criteria is that it does not adversely affect adjacent properties. There are surrounding residential properties in the area, um but the lot consolidation does not affect any adjacent properties as access is remaining the same. And then um the fifth criteria is that any covenants or deed restricted restrictions or anything recorded against the property um of the underlying lots would remain in effect. Um, and so that's just something to note. There are, I don't know of any deed restrictions or anything related to the property. Um, but that is listed as a criteria in the town code. Um, lot consolidations do require public noticing, which requires um that the application be noticed in the local newspaper as well as direct notices mailed to any property within two hundred feet. And um those noticing requirements were met for this application. Um, just a few notes that I wanted to point out. Um, the applicant, when they did submit their application, they stated that the intent for this was to be able to eventually have ADA access to their site. Um, there were no further plans or discussions on what that would look like. Um, so I just wanted to note that any future modifications would have to be approved by the town. Whether that's administratively or go through the public processes um dependent on what would be um proposed at that time, so I don't have that answer for you, but um. If that's something that's proposed in the future, it will have to go through some sort of approval process. Um, and then the town code does require only one access per lot, so the access is proposed to remain the same. But again, in the future, the property owner may request to access the site differently and that will have to be reviewed um at that time. And then another note, just um no right of way obstruction is permitted. There were a couple of comments maybe about some obstructions within the right of way, so I just wanted to note that um there is right of way adjacent on, you know, one oh seven Perry Street and four oh five Mountain Avenue, so it is a corner lot, so both of those um areas have to be uh free of obstruction for, you know, emergency access, snow removal, that type of um thing. And so that other other lots can access their sites as well. Um, so with that, that is all I have for my presentation. Staff does find that the application complies with Chapter twelve, Article six of the town code. And then staff recommends that the planning commission discuss the application and make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, so it does go beyond planning commission and would be um considered by the Board of Trustees after your um recommendation.
All right, so thank you. Any other commissioners have questions for staff?
Um, just kind of randomly, if it's different if it's a corner, does that change anything?
It's not different if it's a corner. I just wanted to point out that, you know, there's just more adjacent right of way, so just um being considerate of of that um as far as the property owner is concerned.
Any other questions? If not, as yet, in the present?
Uh, I got a question. You have the concrete parking area extending actually into the road right away.
Yep, so the um survey and the ILC for the site does show it's a concrete parking pad at this point in time. It's um something that is existing and so, you know, I don't have any recommendations on 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 that, but if there are changes in the future, the site would have to come into compliance or remain on their property for that type of access.
All right, good afternoon, present.
They were supposed to be, and I'm not sure if Diane is on the call. I see a couple of phone numbers.
Hi, we're.
Perfect.
Yes, we're. We're here. We can't get the the Zoom meeting to connect, so, but we are here.
Perfect.
Anyone have questions for that? All right, now we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience to hear the comment on this? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Turn it over to the question for discussion or decision.
Mister Chairman. I move we approve Resolution number twelve, two thousand twenty five. The approval of a lot considerate consolidation uh located at one oh seven uh Prairie Prairie Street and four oh five Mountain Avenue.
Aye, aye.
All right, we have motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? No, it wasn't favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passed this.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should have thought of. We'll go ahead and open up the second public hearing. This is Resolution thirteen, twenty twenty five, consideration of a preliminary development application located at nine hundred Grand Avenue.
Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. Um, let me share my screen again. All right, just checking that everyone can see my screen.
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so tonight we have a Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty five, which is a preliminary development application for a three story mixed use building located at nine hundred Grand Avenue. Um. The applicant is nine hundred thousand LLC and the representatives are Kaylee and Will um Wallison, and I think I'm saying that right, so correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but the site is located at nine hundred Grand Ave. It's on the corner of Grand Ave and Ellsworth Street, so the request is, or the applicant is proposing to redevelop the project um or the site with a new multi-story mixed use development that includes a ground floor commercial space and then two residential units, so one on the second story and then one on the third for a total of two units. Um, all right. So the process for a minor development application, it does require a preliminary and final review. This is the preliminary review process. Um, which is reviewed by the planning commission and the board. Then it goes to final review that will require um review by referral agencies, and then again, it goes to a public hearing at planning commission and Board of Trustees. Um, the application was required to be noticed per town code. Um, it was noticed uh with the original public hearing dates, and so it does meet that requirement. Um, I'm sure you all remember this application. Here's a little timeline and background on the process and what has happened since you last um saw it on August twentieth. Um, but looking back on August twentieth, the planning commission did review this application and did recommend approval to the board with conditions. Those conditions were that the applicant apply for a CUP because of the um percentage of residential use versus commercial use. Um, if there's over fifty percent residential use proposed on the property and by code that requires a conditional use permit, so the recommendation was that when the applicant comes back for final, that they would come back with the CUP request. Um, the second condition was that the step back on the third story be applied to the Grand Avenue frontage and the Ellsworth Street frontage. The third condition was that the applicant remove metal as a primary material. And then the fourth was that the planning commission preferred the renderings that were shown during the public hearing on August twentieth. Um, those were um updated materials that the applicant had provided that weren't originally with um the application, and so that comment was based on those materials presented at that meeting. Uh, so then the application went forward to the Board of Trustees meeting on August twenty fifth. At that meeting, the board motion to continue the application um and requested that the applicant bring back additional materials demonstrating compliance with the step back and material requirements. Um, so the applicant did submit updated materials and went back to the Board of Trustees on September eighth. At that time, the planning commish- or sorry, the board recommended or referred the application back to planning commission so that the planning commission can review the updated materials. And then, so that brings us to tonight, October eighth. Uh, we have a planning commission review. Um, and ultimately, the um planning commission will provide a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. Here we have the previous submitted on the left hand side of the screen and the updated materials. So these were um or this was a response by the applicant based on the um discussion at the planning commission meeting, the public hearing comments, along with the Board of Trustees, so uh you can see a step back incorporated on both the Grand Avenue and Ellsworth facades or frontages. Um, some change in materials, gable elements, um and and various other techniques used to um limit the massing in the bulk of the building. Uh, so here, I just want to touch on the conversation that the Board of Trustees had at their previous meeting, which ultimately resulted in the application coming back to planning commission. So the board requested that the planning commission consider the updated materials and that they evaluate its compatibility with the anticipated central business district overlay standards or the um code changes that are are currently in conversation um at the town. This includes further defining the western rustic architecture in the town. Um, and some potential conversations have been eliminating or significantly reducing the open space and um reinforcing the street wall requirements. So I just want to preface that this was part of the Board of Trustees' conversation at their last meeting. These code changes in this overlay district has not been approved by the town, and therefore this application must be reviewed under the current code. Um, you can bring the application forward um to the applica- applicant and bring these up for discussion, however, again, this application must be reviewed under the current code requirements. Um, so I provided a brief staff analysis. I didn't go into um or I won't be going into as much detail as um you have already seen this application. Most of the changes have to do with facade elements um and and that type of architectural, you know, um changes, and so they still have a commercial versus residential component. They would still be required to apply for that conditional use permit at final site plan. The applicant is aware of this um because they are they do have a residential component that's greater than fifty percent of this mixed use building. Um, they are meeting the minimum open space requirement, which is thirty five percent of the lot or one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. They have just over that um which is included in the the patio and seating area. They show the residential parking being on site and they are meeting the quantities for that. And then again, some of the design standards include the step back now being shown on um the Grand Avenue and Ellsworth facades. A reduced massing technique as far as um using the step back and some of the material and gable elements. And then a material change, so they are proposing uh wood material. They are not proposing the metal as the primary um material, and they did kind of change where the accent materials are located and um how far up on the facade they go and and some of those small changes. Um, so with that, uh staff did find that the application is complying with Chapter twelve, Article two and seven. Those are the zoning requirements and the design standards as outlined in the town code today. So staff recommends that the planning commission discuss the application and make a recommendation to the board based on findings from the town code. So um I am here to answer any questions. I know the applicant, I believe Will is there um as well.
All right, thank you. The commissioners have questions. Stand. Now, I'm bringing that in on. Just name and address for the record.
Thank you all. Will Wallison, uh twenty eleven, January of five, Frager, all that. Um, thank you Emily. Uh, this is very detailed. Um, we've got uh a write-up of our own, our perspective and all due diligence. There's a few things that maybe were done, so let us uh speed over those parts and keep ours relevant. Um. Steve, there is, I don't know if you have it, we just have the renderings. It's more or less what was on the on uh any others.
We speak up as well?
Sure, yes. Um, but there's some renderings that are available to these. Really, in no particular order. Um, those are some additional visuals. Um, first off, thank you guys for your time. Um, I know the um the process takes a lot of your time and I appreciate um you guys listening. Um, I'd like to just take a few minutes to go through the thought process behind the changes in response to your conditions as well as comments from the board and the public, and then a summary of the process that we followed so far. Uh, Emily went over that pretty uh thoroughly, so um I'll skip over most of that part, so I can see how I can share this so that they can see as well.
You keep talking, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Um, we want nothing more than to be a good partner to the town and the community, and we'll be able to do this most effectively with obviously a clear set of expectations and navigate or navigating the remaining rounds of reviews and approvals. With that in mind, our goal for this meeting is to confirm that we've appropriately utilized your conditions to modify the project plan and understand any further clarifications to historic design guidelines that apply to our project. Should there be any further clarifications, we'd like to understand obviously the specific criteria for judging success on this, if we met this criteria. Our goals and vision for the space were being the same. Um, I just want to call special attention to a few certain things which demonstrate that we heard and incorporated what you said. Not only the conditional approval statements, but also the feedback that's been shared by individual commissioner commissioners and public through the process. We've also given thoughtful consideration to comments discussed the last two meetings or during the last two meetings with the Board of Trustees. We've given much effort into incorporating all the conditional changes and as much of the other convergent feedback as possible. These changes, uh as we discussed, conditional use permit. Um, what we're planning on doing is we're only about a hundred feet um in the ratio outside of the conditional use permit uh fifty percent requirements, so we're planning on um just making a small adjustment to get within that and not need to do the conditional portion. Um, these changes um are noted as allowed um between the preliminary and final approvals within a set uh percentage of the square footage changes, so just minor adjustments there. Um, step back requirement uh in interpretation, as Emily said, um we meet this now on both streets. Um, and by doing so, we've significantly increased the gable roof area visible from the street on the front of the building. So that's just uh something I wanted to note that we heard, you know, the feedback for that a couple of times and wanted to incorporate that as much as possible. Uh, primary exterior exterior materials have changed um and the gable element on the Ellsworth Street has for me, as requested. Um, a few additional public comments that have been addressed um that we've just heard along the way and we've incorporated um are that stone no longer goes full height on the front corner of the building. It's the opposite from this isometric here on the left. Um, but we had stone full height and that seemed to um draw some negative feedback, so we went ahead and just pitched that in a little setting. Uh, we've fully eliminated corrugated metal. That also produced negative feedback and we've added a more decorative uh western style facade on front of the building. As Emily said, we'll proceed proceeding with the project as a minor development, and we received a lot of feedback on the project through the through this process. Um, in addition to that, since submitting, we've obviously worked with town staff and heirs, um Grand Lake Fire Department and numerous other entities to collaborate on a beneficial and compliant project. Through the current review process, we presented um on all the dates that uh Emily noted, and um that concluded with the Board of Trustees sending us back here. Um, based on the minor development process, conditional approval from this group and subsequently addressing the conditions of our revised plan, we actually mean that we can move forward with the final development plan. Um, however, it was discussed with uh some of the folks on board that uh they would like us to consider our product, our project in light of the historic district overlay or historic yeah, historical design overlay in the town has been periodically discussed. We recognize and appreciate the Board of Trustees wants to see projects taken to account the comprehensive plan and more specifically, the potential for historic design overlay. Even though the overlay district and any related code changes are still on mid landing stages. Section twelve nine four, E five, B three states that the only basis for rejection of the final development application shall be as non-conformant to adopted rules, regulations and sections of the UNICEF code currently in force in effect and lack of conformance with the approved preliminary development application. Uh, we believe that um as Emily noted, um we just agree and 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 believe that we should hold the application in terms of the current code, um not future proposals that may or may not become part of the code. Uh, that being said, it's important note that we strive for the project plan to further the themes and goals outlined in the plan in numerous ways. For example, the comp plan identifies adding usable outdoor space and expanding business capacity on Grand Ave between Hancock and Bryan as a critical action. As a critical action item. Another critical item, another critical action item is diversifying the local employment base. Increasing the retail mix and making other long-term adjustments to improve economic resiliency. Current design of the state of the outdoor space will very much. Excuse me, that's the key part there. The current four season design of the outdoor space will very much promote economic resilience. Diverse employment base and increased retail mix specifically by promoting year-round use. Supporting this, we noticed that there's several rear-facing outdoor spaces in town that seem to generate very little use in the winter months. And a change promoting open space in the rear property, I think would severely hinder the ability to meet those goals voted in the comp plan. There are many other goals in the plan such as encouraging mixed use, protecting viewshed from the street. Year-round healthy economy and encouraging open space that we believe our revised project plan promotes. I want to point out that we've ensured our preliminary plan aligns with overall themes and vision of the town. However, I think it's important to acknowledge that the comprehensive plan is a guiding aspirational document. And doesn't have that detail and binding regulation needed to adjust and design to. All this said, we're truly here to work together with the time mentioned to make sure, continue on the fast, uh, top greater. We believe and you believe works for the town for the project. Overall, our goals, not only to revise the design so that we met all conditions, but also to demonstrate that we heard. Both commissioners, historical society, society and public had to say about certain elements. We've done our best to make those things happen. We envision the space as one shared by locals and visitors, one that often offers four seasons amenities and as they're drawn by the city of town. Thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Any like commissioners that have questions for the app?
If Emily Lober, the deputy, is sorry for all the language of power, does he familiar with what the kind of?
I'm have been growing more familiar.
Well, you know, we're closer in preliminary, but one of the biggest things is we wanted to bring everything up to the board block. Would you be willing to do that on this project or you don't?
I think there's a lot of factors specific to this, this property as well as the. The feasibility of the project that made that. Something that's. That would be. Let me rephrase that. The factors involved with the lot. The project make it really hard to make projects feasible. You move that forward. There's certain things with. Parking in the rear and the open space. That's something that I know is being discussed, but it's difficult to. Make plans and follow the code as it currently is. Because we don't know if that, whether it will take place and how it would when it does take, if it takes place, when it will take place.
Well, I'll ask the same question. The current code, there's definitely a conflict between the section that says we want you to build right up to the board block. And any other section that says you have to have a thirty-five percent open space. I mean, they're clearly doing that. So, and I recognize what you're saying. We're not authorized to change the rules today either. But I guess my question and I think Bob's question is, if you. Would you consider, would it make sense for you to move it closer to the boardwalk? The code still allows you to have public space in the front. And I think we all like the idea of people and energy and color etc., especially in the winter. But right now that plaza is big. So I guess I'm asking you, not putting you on the spot, but would you consider. Moving it forward a little bit closer with a boardwalk on it? If the open space requirement in the front is not so severe.
I I would love to consider it, but with the unique characteristics of the lot and these things that occurred long before. Long before I was probably alive and, you know, certainly long before I. Just familiar with this property, with the lot lines and structure next door. The problem is that. That structure encroaches on the property, so there's lots of new things that date back. Prior to eighteen or twenty years from now and. Bringing the building forward is not a feasible option. It's a good idea, but we have to be of the thought.
Follow you, didn't get it explained that better?
So the neighboring, the neighboring building encroaches under this property. And there's, if you brought the building forward. It's just, it's not realistic. It's, it's hard to explain, but it's not realistic to have a long-sitting narrow building at the front. It doesn't stand that fifty foot lot with.
You, did I understand that from the last meeting, you gave them an engagement for the roof over grand or something? Is that undoable?
No, it's not undoable because there. There's something called.
Adverse possession.
Exactly. There's something called adverse possession, so you can either, I think a big principle that we have is. Not coming in and trying to punch our neighbor in the nose about something that neither of us. Were a part of to begin with. And so when you talk about a building that encroaches in this whole suburban years. The options are you come to a friendly agreement that works for everyone or. Trying to fight that out and that's adverse possession process.
Well, regardless of the setback that you have and having some, you know, open space right on Grand Avenue, I think that. You know, there are some other places in town where they do have a setback and have this is commercial and. Yeah, the fireplace system that's. I think it's very attractive. As for the building next door. Rather than building it right up in the same frontage as that's like it. I I think it's more attractive to be setback as you have a design.
I think so as well. I think it opens up that corner and makes it not so massive on the corner. As the building would be if you pulled it forward. So I I like the idea of having that kind of open space on that that particular corner.
It's better visibility for, you know, turning around the border and everything, so. I think that's a very attractive.
Yes, what's, I'm just curious, what's the difference between this corner and the other corners that we have massed in right up to the, to the boardwalk? Yeah, and then you look at like, you know, this corner here.
Oh, we have the setback or where the hub is, right on that corner. There is setback and it has some public area out in front there and that's. That's, you know, well done. And very usable and, yeah, and public friendly.
Yeah, I can see it. Or for, I guess for that corner, I could see this working. I wouldn't want to see this replicated over and over in the downtown. Where you have these, I mean, breaks are okay, but to have every building setting back thirty feet. Kind of defeat what we're attempting to create.
Well, I I think I would agree with that except that because of what's happened in the last. Five to ten years on Grand Avenue, everybody that was set up to the boardwalk. Then wanted to use the boardwalk and the public space as additional floor space for the restaurants. They've got all those tables out there, everything else. I think this adds a nice, a very nice complex. Uh, setback to the area myself.
I think it's a little far. I don't mind having tables up front, but this would bother that.
Yeah, thirty feet or almost forty feet back is pretty far setback.
And if you're having enough room for, you know. Four tables up front or something, we've grown.
Well, you know, we've been talking a lot about open space and how there's visual open space. And if you put it in the back of the building, it's not really visual unless you're walking the alley. So. I I think this plan meets the code when it says he has to have a certain amount of open space and. It's it's usable this way. If you put it in the back. That would be on the alley. It would not be used very often because the alley is not a nice place to sit.
You know, I think I'm suggesting that somehow the open space requirement is reduced in this. Whether that's general or here, but I agree with you. That's what the code says and they comply with the code. I'm just asking is would it work to shrink it?
I've never seen something like this than they had. Offensive green picnic tables out in front of. Left there during the winter, the vast snow, just a big blob of crap in front of the building. I think this adds a very good complex.
Say the other question, is it Will kind of right? The metal, I know we said loud and clear, we don't want metal. Now it shows as metal accent. What is it? The same metal? Is it, what is it?
Yeah, so that metal, I'm sure it's, yes. And yes, it is. So that's an allowable accent material standing since listed in there. That's something that if, you know, if there's a consensus where that's just. Not where we want to be going, that's something we're absolutely willing to yield and change on.
Are you proposing to naturally rust it or artificially?
It'll be naturally rusting, but I prefer it. I prefer it.
It says, it says painted, doesn't it? And in the exhibit, I think it says painted.
My apologies because that's changed multiple times.
I was just curious, because there's, yeah, there's a big difference between letting it natural rest over a couple of years versus letting, you know. I think that ends up creating a better product than having our visual.
I would agree from a functional standpoint, if there was. Visual concern over that process taking a while and I'm open to those things.
But it's going top to bottom. You know, I think it's debatable if that's an accent.
You have the calculation of the metal is twenty-nine percent of the. And that's what they recovered, right?
Right, well, but that's not, that's twenty-nine percent of the whole exterior. It's half of the front.
It's listed as twenty, is thirty percent per, I think there's a clear push that I have that per side. And we have done that thirty percent per side. Again, if that's something that is, you know, there's a consensus that that's bothersome. Or instantly reduced, that's something we're happy to make changes.
And those are things I believe that can be addressed at the final. So those, the surfaces and the reveals, that is a part of the final development re-review. You guys have been really speaking on. The size, the mass, the function, how near it resides.
Right, yeah. And sorry, I started asking questions of commission and I probably should have finished the applicant. The public hearing before we. So sorry about that. Do you have other questions for, for Will?
Can I, I just want to say I, I think the changes are awesome. I really do. I mean, it's come so far from when we saw it first and I really appreciate that.
I'll concur with that. I do have one question. Are the fireplaces, are they intended to be gas fireplaces? Picture shows them as well, obviously, but.
And very warm at that.
Okay. Other questions at this time? We'll have you come back sometime in the public.
Thank you.
All right, the members of the public. Hand give us your name and address. Wait for the comments for a few minutes.
I would like Emily to explain to the planning commission what some of the changes are. Why, why this specific area, the changes and really the issues to try to protect. The look and feel of whatever stretches decide kind of thing and. While I know that you, these guys have been told what those changes are going to be. And this looks beautiful and fabulous. It's not going to be those. And if we lose that ability, we lose the ability for the remainder of the stretch to protect the historic nature of. So I I don't know if Emily's prepared to kind of go over some of those things, but it would be very helpful, I think, for you all. We're much further ahead, I think. I don't know where it's, where it is, but my understanding, I think from one of the other meetings was that. If you're ready to vote or the trustees, maybe they'll be ready to vote by the end of this month. So.
We're close.
It's not, it's not a pipe dream. It's not all the way down the road and Jim Kreitzer has been unbelievable. Listening to all this, he's come to every meeting and really adapted his buildings to meet. What it is that the Ford and the town are trying to achieve.
Your other members? If you get one written comment, I can disagree with it, particularly from the public. This is from Jim Serenka, who says, commissioner, she has a meeting, so they won't be able to attend in person. Regarding nine hundred Grand Avenue, I'd like to thank Kaylee and Will for listening to the comments and reducing the amount of rock and metal in their building design. I believe the results in design will be a bit appropriate later in the grand system. And then he goes on, but it's about the next public hearing, so wait for Ben to do that. All right, if there's no other comments from the public, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission. We will give the applicant a chance to come up and have a rebuttal if you'd like.
Not right now.
We'll turn it over to the commission for a discussion.
We are real close to presenting the historical overlay. This would not fit in. Would not want to be your, the first thing out of the box, ruin that whole work that we're trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I I saw, the design standard said, you know, it didn't meet. It's a should and not a shall is that it just says large setbacks from the street railways should be discouraged. You know, it's for new building construction, so. And it was a shouldn't, but it's a, it's pretty, it's pretty self-explanatory that new buildings shouldn't have this large of a setback, so.
Agreed.
Beyond that, I agree that I think what they've done to try to reduce the messing has worked. I just can't get over the, 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 I guess how far back building is still sitting, but. Like you said, I think a few feet off makes sense to incorporate a patio and stuff like that, but. And it is unfortunate that the bank building sits. The way it does with that, with that overhangs. The commissioners, boss?
Well, I. I think this, you know, the planning commission is supposed to go into the deep dives to alleviate some work for the board, so. Would have been really nice to have us included in this historic overlay. You know, we all have the same goals and. We really don't have any idea of what is coming in yet. We're asked to vote without any consideration.
Are you able to give us a, I guess a preview of maybe not even that, what's coming forward, but let the board discuss.
Emily, are you able to bring that?
Um, yeah, I don't have any. Specific.
I'm, I'm not going to say the maximum setback has to be X because we don't have that answer. It, this is something that we'll be going back to Planning Commission and the board later this month. The intent is to have a discussion on October twenty-second, I believe. Is that the next Planning Commission date? Yeah, but generally there has been conversation about the open space requirements that are currently existing and reducing or eliminating all of those for mixed use buildings to help encourage the street wall element that's already in the code. Because as you've already mentioned, some of the language in the code is should and instead of shall. So the intent is to firm up some of that language. The conversation has also been, let's see, what else did I have on my, my list? Some of the, it's just some of the, again, the language with like the architecture and materials and, and maybe further having prohibited materials that don't seem to align, like corrugated metal, metal, those types of conversations. So I don't have exact language for you and it will be discussed in a public hearing on October twenty-second, and that is the format for discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're just more curious of what the, the board sent it back to us.
Yep, I understand.
This sort of over there is more of a western or mining town. There are a few songs more about the hydrocrusaders on the front.
Right.
Basically wood.
I saw Josh, do you have something you want to add?
Nothing additional beyond what Emily mentioned, but you know, part of the reason the board did kick it back to the planning commission is because the applicant has some new design elements that they brought at that meeting. And it, you know, staff didn't quite have a time to do the full review. And they wanted to give you the consideration to be able to review these updated plans that you're seeing tonight. So that allows the process just to be a little bit more succinct as it moves forward. We all know that there's the talk of the different code pieces. And that's why Emily and I are kind of in this position of we're highlighting how the current plans meet the code as it is today, but noting also how there's those other pieces that are in process. And we'll continue to work with the applicants on those pieces as time progresses. We just, we can't get, you know, ahead of that step with the applications that are in right now. We have to give them their, their process, their opportunity to be heard as they align with code as it is today.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you would like, the mayor had asked if she could speak.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner and Commission. I first of all, would like to say that we have been working as a board to change these codes, which I know that for you all, that has been, you know, more of a rumor than anything else because you haven't been a part of it or were seen it firsthand. But we have been working towards that. And for several reasons, we've been unable to bring you in on these workshops. And I've had every intention of that happening. And again, we'll take care of that directly after this meeting. I think one of the things that I want to touch in and what I had hoped would happen today is from Emily and Josh, a little bit of that, that real discussion. You know, even the photographs that you all have seen before of that overlay historical district piece. And, you know, in this, in this, without speaking too much or inappropriately, this corner will start that historical area and using the words that we've used before, historical, Western, et cetera. The biggest issue with this project is the open space and the fact that it is so far back. If what we're looking for is to bring these buildings forward and still having, you know, space for tables or whatever it is, like many of the other businesses currently have or could have, they'll still have that look and feel that they're looking for. But if we allow, you know, these, these things to happen, even with the current code saying that this, this setback can be, you know, still looked at as a non-qualifier. I think that's the, the critical piece here. This is not necessarily seen as a hardship because of the easement. The easement was done on their own purview without, you know, really knowing what was going on and they've been patient and whatnot. But like Kirsten Heckendorf had mentioned, this process is not an easy one. And it puts a lot of burden on you all, I know. But I think it's really important to hear from Josh and Emily and anyone else in there that has, you know, really been a part of this discussion. Commissioner Fitch and trustee. Excuse me. You know, to help to understand the importance of, of this setback piece. And I would just like to say, any of you on the commission tonight, you know, please feel free to give me a call and we can discuss this more. And I know you're frustrated and, and that's understandable. So thanks for allowing me that, Commissioner.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and turn it back over to the, to the commission. Again, I think I understand the what the, the board is, yeah, what the board is, is asking for. I think we have to unfortunately look at it based on what our code currently is.
So if Will wants to go forward with what we have right now, and let's say we say yes. And then the changes have come out and they're favorable to him. I mean, in my mind, if we give up the open space, your land just became more valuable. You don't have to put more space in the back. You can add twenty people to the building inside. That's real money to you in my mind. So my question is, if he has this approved today and suddenly comes out with these changes that he likes and he might apply?
Yeah, yeah, he could reapply for, you know, start across it.
And if he doesn't like the changes, he takes what he wants.
Correct.
Assuming the trustee's approval.
Correct. But I think, you know, you can. It's unfortunate that we're, I guess we're this close to having regulations with this. Obviously, this and the project we're reviewing right after this, those have huge consequences on how the downtown from looking up. I said, I would like to see him comply with the current regulation or I mean, comply with what is moving forward. And again, mostly because we've already discussed what our setbacks are now, something that we need to encourage and then so. That finds out though.
Well, I think he did a tremendous job in complying with their previous concerns from the previous meetings.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he can make a motion. I will say if you're going to make a motion towards approval, one of the things I would like to bring up is the massing of the, the pillars going down. There should be some more fall, I think, to those pillars at the base and letting them I guess larger at the bottom and then smaller at the top so that provides a little bit more amassing to the building.
Timber, they're not log, right?
They're timber.
Yeah, just.
But you can do things that should work, but yeah, but to make a bigger base.
Like a pile last year.
Add on to the bottom.
Yeah.
Well, then, that is not my earth and Western. No, I, 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 I think the straight timbers are.
More historic.
Historic, more historic. People use what they had available. They weren't able to make some fancy designs. And so I, I think this fits the, the look of it. I know there's a lot of contention about the metal, but you know, in the samples and in the drawings, it doesn't look like metal from the street. And, you know, we also have a problem where we do have to take into consideration the code as it is. That is what is legally defensible by the town. And if we start voting based on what these new designing elements are that we are not aware of, we, we don't know what we're voting for.
Well, I think if you give that, only then, our design review standards say large setbacks from the street right away should be discouraged. And if you were to, it's too bad they don't say shall. But that's intended by the design guidelines.
Well, it appears to me, looking at the sketch, that those, the main timbers on the front of the portion that sticks out mostly throughout the avenue, it appears that those are larger than the other timbers that they have on the shed on the roof shed or with the those with long leg and, and some other timbers as well. It looks like those are eight by eight versus six by six. But it appears to me they're pretty massive.
If you'd like to entertain a motion or if anyone else would?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve resolution thirteen twenty twenty-five, resolution recommending approval of preliminary development application for a three-story mixed-use building located at nine hundred Grand Avenue.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? I assume we're going to have split votes, let's do a roll call. So do you? If you say.
Commissioner Verger.
Commissioner Verger.
I, your name.
Yes, or no?
Uh, yeah, I vote yes.
I second it.
Yeah, he's seconded.
I know, but we're going, we're just doing a roll call instead. It's not getting unanimous spoken, so.
John Murray, I vote yea.
Heather Bishop, yea.
Bob Miller, nay. Well, Craig Finch, nay. I will vote nay. Both are three green. But.
In the next one.
The motion passes.
Yeah.
You're at the motion.
You're the seventh member.
You do need the seventh member for this situation.
Where it was last time.
So anything that's unapproval should be. And so this is what we're going to record the, uh, the vice president trustee. Anybody need a break? Go ahead. We'll go ahead and take a five minute recess.
Let's hurry.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Before we call the next agenda item up, I guess, without you giving a gage if I can. We use Steve on the motion that we just had, we're understanding is the board.
No, it fails. It needs a majority to pass. They can rephrase the motion and try again or try a totally different motion if they want.
Thank you. So with that, I think we should take a re-vote, just so that it's very clear on the record as to what happens with the motion. So Mr. Murray, if you'd like to make that motion again, so that it's clear as to if it passes or fails.
Are some of the others going to change their minds?
So, well, we just need a vote. Commissioners, what will happen is I will ask you if, if you would make your motion and Commissioner Burke make your second. I will then, if Chairman, if you would ask me to, to hold the commission, I will name your names and you'll tell me yes or no on the motion. And that way it'll be clear and orderly for the record.
Thank you.
Well, I make a motion to approve the resolution thirteen twenty twenty-five, a resolution recommending approval of a preliminary development plan for a three-story mixed-use building located at nine hundred.
Commissioner Burke? No, you have to call the set, or you, do you wish the second?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke has seconded. I will hold the commission. Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Nay.
Commissioner Finch?
Nay.
Chairman?
Chuck? Nay.
Thank you very much. The motion fails. It'll be referred to the board as such.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Now we'll move on to the third item of business on the agenda. This again is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. This is for resolution fourteen twenty twenty-five, consideration of a preliminary development application located at ten sixteen Grand Avenue and one thousand and one, one thousand and five, one thousand and seven Lake Avenue, no next of other wood development.
Awesome. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Can everyone see the screen okay in the room there? I believe I'm sharing presentation.
Yeah.
Perfect. And apologize, I didn't realize that my resolution was different when I made my PowerPoint. So there might be some references to thirteen in there, but it is fourteen twenty twenty-five. This is for the leatherwood preliminary development plan, preliminary plat. As noted, the site is located at ten sixteen Grand Ave and one thousand and one, one thousand and five and one thousand and seven Lake Avenue. Zoney on the property is commercial within the commercial zone district. And the uses currently, there's a mix, there's vacant, underutilized properties or buildings that are either sitting vacant or not utilized to their full potential. And the applicant is proposing the multi-story, multi-building mixed-use development. The request from the applicant for the mixed-use building encompasses approximately sixteen thousand four hundred square feet of new ground floor commercial space. In addition, on the upper units and tucked behind, there are nineteen residential units, including a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. On-site parking is provided for all the residential units, so in alignment with code. On-street parking credit has been counted to meet the commercial parking requirements in code. And onsite open space is also aligned with code and provided onsite. As the commission may recall, the applicant has gone through a series of various meetings, starting back in the summer, I believe, with twenty twenty-four was kind of the one that we remember kind of capturing and hearing a little bit about was the concept plan review by the town board, trustees and planning commission. Based on that meeting, the applicant moved forward with their sketch plan that was presented to the planning commission back in December fourth, twenty twenty-four. So almost a year ago. Following discussions and that meeting, the applicant submitted some variances for consideration for the early development plans. And I believe in the packet materials towards the back of the, the preliminary plan set, you can see the evolution of some of those designs that the applicant provided just for reference. Based on the findings of those variances and the denial of a couple of those, the applicant made some additional revisions and submitted their preliminary development plan this summer. And there was one variance request tied to that, and that was with the first floor residential along Lake Avenue, looking for an opportunity to convert part of this space, not all of it, to allow residential within that first fifty feet. That variance was denied and then. Uh that variance was denied, and then about two and a half weeks ago, the applicant submitted some revised plans that are within your packet. And so that is what we're looking at and what we're going through tonight. Um here on the next page is kind of the renderings there included in the packets, I know, I believe the applicant hand around hard copies of this for everyone, so. Um some basic visual renderings, the top left image is of the Grand Avenue. Vis- view, excuse me, and the bottom image is from Lake Avenue view. Uh let's see, here we go, so some of the items that we looked at from a staff standpoint, given this is a preliminary application. Uh we looked at the preliminary plat, um the preliminary plat will continue to work with the applicant, they're aware of this, that. I think historically in Grand Lake, some of the plating and preliminary final process, the plats were structured a little differently. And so we're just trying to make sure that there's some consistency in how the preliminary plats are presented, and so that'll be refined as part of the final application packet. Um if the preliminary is approved and that moves forward. We looked at building height and site layout, so looking at where the buildings were placed on the property. Um most of the buildings are fronting along Lake Avenue, fronting along Grand Avenue where possible. Um and then the building heights, taking into account the steep topography, get that additional five-foot allowance, so that's where you're seeing the forty foot. Um in some places, um but then you have the the shorter heights, especially in the alleyway where the the topography is really high. The other area we looked at was parking, um right now, the project meets all the parking requirements in code. Parking is one of the items we discussed with the board of trustees regarding the downtown overlay, and that's something we talked to the applicant about. And um either way, they meet the parking as it is today, um so no issues there. Open space, uh this is one, if you recall, there was a couple variances about this, trying to reduce the amount of open space on site. Um and so the redesign that you have in front of you today for the preliminary plan. Accounts for the required number of percentage, excuse me, of open space on the property. Um that is one area as well that we are looking at, is open space within the downtown area, that historic overlay and. Um the applicant is aware of this, and and we've had discussions that if that progresses and it moves at uh appropriate pace. With this development plan, the final may see some minor adjustments, but that's still speculative at this point. Um architecturally, the applicant has really worked through the preliminary architectural plans. Um they've done a good job of addressing a lot of the previous comments, concerns that were raised, but also fitting to the maximum height threshold. Um they currently meet a lot of the architectural requirements, there's a few things that. From, you know, the design layout, things like that, that will continue to flesh out with the applicant, given this is just a preliminary stage. Um there will be that refinement moving into final, so um a couple little things that we mentioned in the um staff memorandum was. Um the distribution of windows, um just the the amount of windows distributed across, as well as incorporating some wainscoting. Or other elements, so it didn't feel like the windows went all the way, kind of floor to ceiling, creating a little bit more of that traditional downtown where you have a foot or two usually of. Kind of like a wood or a stone wainscoting at the bottom. We were looking at roof pitches and forms, uh really working to maintain the height, also add a little bit more variation, especially along Grand, Grand Avenue. And currently how it's presented, it does match a lot of the existing buildings, there's just little things we can talk through. Um as a team, once we get through the process a little bit further. And then the separation of materials, just talking about how we distribute um the massing of the building with material separations and things like that. So um fairly minor overall in terms of the evolution of the design, and it's something that the applicant and the applicant's representatives have noted. Um that we'll continue to work on as we move forward through the process and the review process. So, based on our review, we did not find any major deficiencies. That would prohibit the preliminary plans to come forward, be present to you all. Um and be able to move forward, and so based on what has been presented, all the past discussions over the past year and a half, at least, that I have documented. Um and the feedback that we've received from the commission, board of trustees over time with the applications that have come forward. Uh staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat and preliminary development plan. And sample motions, as I mentioned, it says resolution thirteen, but it is fourteen, so uh please disregard that, but. Uh there's obviously the motion to approve as presented, a motion to approve with. Uh recommend approval, excuse me, with uh conditions, and then if there is a motion of denial. Um you know, establishing a basis on where the application does not meet certain code criteria. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and turn it over to the applicant to give. Their presentation and overview, and I have the development plans from your packet pulled up here, so I can go through that with the applicant as needed.
We have questions for staff at this time.
Um Josh, you said that each building is the five feet, so they're all going to forty?
Sorry, can you speak up a little bit?
Would you say that each building is the five-foot additional to go to forty each? Each building, because that's.
So, if if the parcel on which the building sits has greater than the five-foot topography change. Um based on the building height calculation, I can't remember the exact terminology in code. Um that's what gives them the additional five-foot height to go from the thirty-five to forty, and that's what we've discussed in the past, when one of the variances came forward, it was always that. Anything above the forty were some of those previous variance requests.
I just wanted to know, each building wasn't, the most on brand and the ones on like, it's for each floor.
It's ba- it's based on the lot, so the lots, I believe that's how it's shown in the plans, I'd have to go. To the plans, but they show the topography and the change in elevation across the lot to to justify the height. So, I don't know, Gabe, if you're in the room from the applicant's standpoint, you might have that answer quicker.
Question. Sorry, yeah, if you can just address that during the presentation. Uh question, Josh, does it, so if if we approve, I know this is preliminary, but we get to final and we approve. This as is, does it have an expiration? Do they see that there's six phases or? To this project?
Yep, so the code as it's written today does not have um. The 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 town's code doesn't have expiration language for plans, there is the state. Um statute language regarding uh development plans, I believe it's three years, it's it's either two or three. Um so don't quite quote me on that, but if the applicant is making progress, working on a phase, then that kind of extends the clock. If it is presented and approved and or approved with those phases established.
Okay.
Yep, so as long as they're making progress, now if everything stops, two or three years goes by, again, can't remember two or three from statute. Then technically it would be an expired plan.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, is that that's. If this is a ten-year project in ten years, it could be a whole different. Type of development that the town is seeking even at that point, so.
Yep, understand.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, yeah, if anyone would like to come up. We'll give you a name and address for the record.
New Chrysler, eight twenty-eight grand, uh number two oh six. I'm just gonna say a couple things real quick, and then Josh, you don't even know what I'm about to say, so. Um over the last few days, we started about two weeks ago after the last time, but. Tonight you have a preliminary plat, okay? And you also have the uh the plan, preliminary plan. We have also now, and Josh for a. This is an inside joke, Zach. We'll distribute it, but it's actually Gabe. And uh but we do have a plan that will meet the new code that you guys are trying to adopt. So we would like to show that to you also, uh because we just got it put together in the last, I think we got it done day before yesterday. Um if Josh doesn't want us to do that, we won't bring it forward, but at one point, and I'll say this, a few years back, it was probably. Maybe four or five years ago, if you recall, I think it was the Burning Sunset project, we had, we presented two plans because either one would work for us. To the planning commission and to the board, and you guys chose the one that you wanted or that was acceptable to you guys, and. So I would like to kind of repeat that, if that's okay, and if you don't want me to go down that road, then we won't, we'll just leave this alone and not and not. Talk about the other plan, but I don't want to get too involved in this one. This in front of you, if the other one, everything, both plans completely meet the code, hundred percent height, mass. Density, uh parking, everything we need in both, both of them, we're not asking for any variances other than the one we already have for the. One space down on Lake Avenue. Um and so there's, and the design's the same, everything's gonna be the same, except we just got rid of the the big open space on Grand Avenue, we added more building. So if you guys want to allow us to bring that forward, we'll do that. And if not, and uh then we won't. And I'll let Gabe uh move forward with that, and we'll pass out the other one also.
I guess a question for s- for staff, can we, since it was, this was an advertised vote, can we win the?
So my suggestion, um Chairman Chocky and applicant uh Jim, so what I would do is. Let's first kind of focus on the existing application um and content and the design. You know, talk through it, because that's the current preliminary that's that's being reviewed, that's the current one that's before you, knowing that. There is the potential for the code to change, I think we go through the discussion, go through a discussion on this building, but then. Allow the applicant to be able to show kind of conceptually what could change if said code amendments are made. I'm just trying to preserve that quasi-judicial public hearing process of the existing application being reviewed. Uh but knowing that the applicant has made some of those adjustments and is looking at that potential code change, I think it's important for you all to see that. Based on what I heard from the nine hundred grand discussion.
Okay, well, that being said, frankly, the time, the timing discussed on. This code change is quite unbelievable to me. Um I I don't feel that the times that we're being told is is being handled properly by staff. And we keep being told next month, next month, and next month, this is our eleventh meeting in nineteen months, eleven meetings. And we don't even have a preliminary plan approved yet. It's very, 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 we are completely disgusted, okay? I appreciate your time, but we need to move on, and so that's why we want to do that tonight, and if you don't do that tonight, then we want approval on the plans in front of you. And I'll.
Well, I think whatever staff is, that yes.
I've been here in for staff for a year and a half.
No, I'm saying you can present both plans.
Well, no, that's not what you said, we can't get a vote of it tonight, we can show it.
I can say you can't get a vote.
Okay, I'll let Gabe take the primary.
Okay. And I guess the question is, what you're presenting, your second option that you're presenting, doesn't mean current. If it means current code, there's no reason it can't be voted, if it doesn't mean current code, that's the issue, so.
So then let's go with a, let's go with the the one we got, forget about the second one.
Yeah, yeah, the second option, have a reduction in open space, because that was what we were expecting, not to zero, but just a little bit. Um but yeah, we can focus on the one that's fully voted in plan, instead of current code is in force in effect, um and. Gave a three fifteen, I have granted, granted, um thank you all again for taking a look at our project. We're excited again to show you um what I'm thinking of as kind of the four major revisions of the project, um. We've developed the architecture a lot and are pretty excited to get your feedback and move this forward into the. Into the final review process where we can get into more detailed discussion on materiality and architectural form and and detail. Um for tonight, I'm understanding and based on Josh's uh recommendation and sort of summary in the agenda is that. Our focus is really on site design, right? Building massing setbacks, frontages, or the adjacency of the building footprints. Right of ways to each other, as well as parking requirements, open space requirements, um. Building height, right, that kind of thing, um getting into the actual materials we're using, or what Josh started to mention about. Architectural sort of articulation and material separation, all that feedback is really, really useful and is meant for final review. So I think any comments you have today are useful and could certainly be conditions on top of the preliminary approval. Um and what we're hoping to do is is get to the final stage where we can actually show you something that's more refined and. Ready to go into an architectural discussion, and so with that being said, um based on the plans you saw back in July versus now. Um we have removed the commercial kiosk that was on Graham, that was sort of a part of the larger open space next to the building on Grand. Um and we sort of revised the ground level of the building on Lake that we were proposing residential units on, right? Um so the existing site, that's sort of existing non-conforming residential use and kind of just vacancy on that big lot, and. We heard you loud and clear that it's important to have commercial space on the ground floor, on the primary frontages of the site. So now, all of our buildings everywhere on the ground floor, except for that sort of odd lake house condition that we we have a. Variance for, um all the ground floor units are commercial on the street frontage, and most of those commercial units go deeper than the fifty-foot minimum requirement. Um and we're activating, yeah, that that whole pedestrian front with commercial use where buildings do exist. Um so that being said, building one, the one on the Lake Avenue uh gained. About four hundred square foot in its footprint, but now the entirety of that lower floor is commercial use. So, the building sort of unit mix has changed and updated, based on your feedback, building two, the one on Grand Avenue. Um it gained about twelve hundred square feet, we enlarged it a bit after taking away the kiosks to sort of balance. The numbers on, and we kept most of our open space on Grand as activated, functional, useful sort of public amenity. Patio spaces, they would be heated and partially covered and useful year-round and and potentially pretty big value adds to the pedestrian. Community on Grand Avenue. Um overall, we, in terms of project numbers, we gained a couple hundred square feet of commercial space. We lost almost three thousand square feet of residential space because we lost those ground level units on the Lake Avenue. The buildings above, or you know, the floors above those ground level units really didn't change that much from the lack of proposal, misproposal. So we're still looking very much at similar buildings, architecturally, similar layout on site. All the residential uses are parked in the alley, all the trap and maintenance uses are serviced off the alley to keep the public right of ways. Functional and activated and and uh satisfying, um and then I think, you know, for. The plat map discussion, we have refinements that that these maps will include as we go into final, but they're certainly outlining our general unit mix. And by help of of building circulation and and residential units mostly and commercial on ground floor, um. Building heights, I know this was a question just now, but all four buildings sit on topography that varies greater than five feet. So the way the code reads, you get the forty-foot allowance versus the thirty-five, if it's mixed use or commercial use. And if the building footprint itself negotiates greater than five feet of grade change, which we have for all four buildings. Um so that's the way we're calculating, and we're calculating it from the lowest corner of the building footprint. At grade or within three feet of that lowest corner, rather, the way they vote, algorithms. Um and then parking, like like I said, all the residential parking is off-street, off the alley. Um and we have residential units that vary from one bed, two bed, and three bed sort of unit mixes. All of those require less than two spaces technically, like one, one and a half, but every unit on site has two parking spaces. So this allows for some guest uses and just overall good functionality. Um commercial parking is all done by on-street parking credits as outlined in the code, the calculation for that. Could be a worthwhile topic for for. Consideration when you're looking at things in central business district, the calculations in terms of getting into the technicalities are a little, a little backwards and a little self-defeating. But um just a thought there, uh our open space is right-aligned at thirty-five percent, hasn't changed since last time. And yeah, that's pretty much it, so we're definitely here to field any questions, looking forward to additional feedback and really looking forward to. Moving that, getting a recommendation for the board that that moves us into the next stage of this process. Um my last note would just be that the previous hearings tonight were accompanied with a staff recommendation for discussion. And our presentation is accompanied with a staff recommendation for approval, and I think part of that is that we have made. An incredible amount of effort to work with the commission and the town to incorporate feedback, and by all means, we intend to continue to do that through final. Um I just wanted to say that, so, thanks, Lord.
Questions, but at it, um uh there's the parking, the parking's off the alley, the residential parking, is it tandem? Is it tandem? How are you handling that?
Most are tandem. There are one or two units that have a double wide, but because of the constraints on site, most are tandem.
So that's not going to be the most popular feature of a condo.
You know, it really depends. It depends on what kind of recreational vehicles people might bring with them, or if they have, you know, sort of trailer uses or additional storage. Many people in a tandem garage will park an oversized truck and a couple sleds or something like that, and we're not, we're not dictating what goes in their.
So the town doesn't allow someone to park overnight on the street anyway, right? Looking at you.
Mm-hmm. So in two hours.
Okay.
Except in the winter.
Yeah. Are you actually having oversized garage doors, or are they? You said oversized vehicle.
Yeah.
Truck in these cars?
Yes, they're.
All right. Um, I had two questions. Uh, one, what is the percentage frontage on Grand Avenue for that building that is up to the board block or, you know, that jets out?
It's almost exactly a third. There's a hair over a third of the frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then in your site plan, you showed a turnaround for, yeah, like close side turnaround, we're going to say at the intersection of Lake and Garfield, is that part of this project?
That was discussed with staff as, as a potential benefit to the town for traffic movement there.
So we're not approving that as part of this project.
It's, it's not something that we would build directly. It's meant to be a reference to the sort of ongoing discussion about the future Lake Avenue and just, just a a background server, future discussion.
So public improvements that you'd be doing with this project is just the boardwalk associated with Lake Avenue and Garfield?
Yeah, the boardwalk associated with Lake and Garfield, um, and. Yes.
And of course, I agree.
Yeah.
I just have one other question, I guess. In our design standards, it talks about projects that contain multiple lots, so paying close attention to breaking up the vertical. This uh, you know, pattern, scale, plus all the single lot development. So can you explain how you did that on Lake Avenue? Understand that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm gonna step just a hair away from the mic, I hope you can still hear me. Actually, Steve, you can just go back up to that, or this is fine, um. So you can see the sort of articulation between primary roof forms and what might be considered the rest of the building, sort of sitting behind those primary forms. And essentially what we're doing here is, is building somewhat of a mythology, right? It's all new building, we all know that, but as it moves into the future, when people look at it and wonder how this came about or how this was constructed instead of a hundred and fifty foot long bash line with one roof capturing the entire building, having these separate forms, having the articulation of public entries and residential, you know, living spaces versus bedrooms articulated differently, allows it to feel like it's more like maybe two historic buildings that had inbuilt between them, right? Um, and so we've broken up the Lake Avenue building into four or maybe five building frontages in the way you visually experience the building. And part of that is just material separation. We have accent material that follows all the way to the ground under a specific roof line that happens again, that happens again here. And then we're sort of articulating some historic elements like those sawtooth parapets and the sort of dentil parapets, you know, with the, the repetitive blocks on them. Um, and I would note that the geometry of some of those final details is very conceptual in these drawings. Um, all of it, or pretty much all of it, is meant to be timbered, right? There may be minor, minor metal and stone accents as we get into sort of, you know, design detailing. But it's all absolutely meant to sort of reflect historic grand like built by one person, built out of material that and built out of natural zodiac materials, et cetera.
And so, Steve, are we, we're just approving preliminary, but is that final that we get into all those detail?
Correct.
Material.
Correct. Stone, the steel.
Windows.
Windows, that. Okay, it, it, you are getting a, a, a view of it, but it's, it's really the boxes. And their location of the massing and how it fits, especially with the plan is what that commercial to residential units was proposed.
Thank you. Other, do you want to answer any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, on page, it's probably a Jim question. If you could go to page eight on this presentation, I want to walk through these phases a little bit, huh? Or would you rather that Gabe do it? Either way, you want me to do it?
Gabe, you want to move to?
Page, to page eight, Josh. Josh, page.
Yeah, which pager is it, Gabe?
They're looking for page eight, Josh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll zoom in a little bit for you.
I, I guess I'm starting on, on like, oh, of course, the cotton house, you guys faces one, two, and three, you all stack up and play. Let me, let me talk about this, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, there's a specific reason we did this, because I learned a big lesson that we were doing multi. Our first couple of projects, I mean, building this army's long of the south, full CEOs, many parts of the building when we complete them, unlocks our communities. Um, I built big condo projects and made different municipalities in the past, and as you finish of like, let's say a certain floor, the fire system works, you have accesses, everything's drywalled, everything above it and decided is all fire taped. They will give you, let's look at a twenty-story building downtown Denver. There are stories on that building that won't be completed for ten years. People, tenants don't move in, so they would give you a CO on a certain building, or our county doesn't do that. Um, in Grand County, so what, what I have to do, I found out after the first project I did up here eight years ago, is we have to phase it so that we can get, I permit it in different phases, so that as I complete that, I can get a CO on that face. For a perfect example, in this situation, we want to try to have the restaurant, which is the old event center done on the main level, we want to try to have that done as soon as we can, maybe even as early as next midsummer. We can get through this process and get a building permit. And then we would have the, the condo on the second floor, which is phase two, and then phase three would be the two condos on the top of that building. But as long as we have all the emergency accesses down, the fire alarm's working, the fire system put in, fire tape on the drywall all around it, then we would be able to get a CO on that part. That's why we have those phases broke up the way they are.
With structure later, start them all.
Structurally, the, yes, yes, absolutely.
Again, the, the other question I have about the phases, what's the condition of phase four, five, and six? Is, are you, are you gonna go in and raise everything? Are you have fences on? What, what, what's the condition of that land by the way?
Um, yeah, we would have, we would fence all of the project as we're building them, of course.
I guess I'm asking upfront, because I notice you start taking the trees down on, on Garfield.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be true.
Take those little cabs out. Are you gonna put a fence around it immediately, or are we gonna?
When we start construction on that, from that portion.
So until then, is it gonna be usable land?
Uh.
I guess what I'm asking is on that particular space, is it would be feasible to say the town can use it for people to sit down and watch the fireworks, or are you gonna have a fence on it?
Um, I would have to answer to that. I really never thought about it.
And same thing, um, uh, uh, on, now, Grand Avenue, is that gonna be doable for anything, or is it gonna be?
Um, I guess we would have an issue with, the only problem would be liability and insurance, because we're trying to keep.
But you're not adverse to. But I thought it'd be something back to the, to the town that, hey, Jim's gonna put grass on there and you'll have to watch the. I think yours are way from you doing anything on base.
Well.
Right?
Phase five is probably gonna be our, our last phase.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to see it set there for five years with the instructions that surround it, the molders.
No, we won't have that. I know that, in, in fact, Brian's been honest about just a little bit of stuff we're gonna do with that old reach out, which actually, we're gonna tear it down next Friday. I finally got all the asbestos out of it. And um, that building comes down a week from Friday. So that whole thing that we're, of course, was, but, um.
That's my biggest fear is these things setting like the, the Torrey's yellow site and, you know, and when the park is setting the way.
Yeah, they're working really well. Actually, looks really good. But, no, that's not our intention. Buildings, the phase five that's on here and the, um, what we call building two will start fairly soon. It will probably start right away in the spring. Um, the whole, all the stuff on Lake Avenue, and then the, the building number in will probably follow that up by a year or so.
But the total completion is still eight years.
No, 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 that didn't come from me. That came from, if things went really bad, and the state would allow it. Um, I think we talked about at one time, there would be a six years is what we agreed on at that planning meeting. Was the permit for that building would need to be applied for within six years. I'm pretty sure that's what we talked about. I'd have to look back.
That's where I worried about big test thing coming soon, five years from now.
No, it's not gonna be like that.
So you're getting that restaurant, you're planning to have foundation all the way along the Lake Avenue this next year?
We, we want to do that, yes. We've already got a, a few units spoken for, and the event center remodel will go pretty quickly. And um, as well as the treehouse and lake house will go pretty quickly. And so, um, the building two, which we call it, which is phase five, will start right away. We plan to start that this coming spring. We wanted our foundations in already and framing it that.
Oh, next page has building numbers, I think. Other questions? We will open the app then, before the app finishes. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. The members in the audience. Begin, your name and address. Give me your comments for three minutes.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Paul Masterson, two twenty Park Avenue, Wayne, Grant Lake. Um, this is actually the perfect spot of where I wanted to talk as well. So I've heard that parking has been a hot topic of discussion from previous meetings, so I really hope that I'm not being redundant. However, as I was reviewing the packet, I saw something that pissed in my gut. Uh, on this page or page forty-two of the agenda packet, if you're on that. Uh, I'm seeing that the majority of the lawn between the boardwalk and pier uh has been removed for parking spaces. I was one of the community members during the master plan process or the town, and I vividly remember the conversations about preserving, if not increasing green space along our very limited lakefront access. I get that uh parking space is limited uh currently, but it quite literally feels like we're paving paradise. I don't know what the solution would be, um, but I would just encourage the builder, the planner, the trustees, and the commissioners to really hone in on if we want to take away the very small green space we currently have there to add the twenty-five and a half spaces. Thank you.
Here's my therapy first, the group Lake Avenue. I'm just gonna back that up a little bit. When I was on the lands um, town lands committee, that was one of the unanimous things we did discuss is shutting down Lake Hall traffic. So adding parking spaces does nothing. And I, over the summer, it was so busy down there with cars. At one point, I took a picture, there were cars parked legally on one side, legally on the other side, and then cars trying to drive up the middle and people trying to walk. There, it doesn't work. So just want to throw that out as kind of, in addition to what he's saying, increasing parking doesn't make sense. It's the direction we end up wanting to go is to not have traffic there in, in the summer.
If you want to talk, you'll be too.
Others?
Can I say, sorry, can I say one more thing? Or I've already done my bit.
Uh, you didn't use your three minutes.
I'll just put on my, my different hat, um, so I'm actually gonna treat my heart happening. I also remember part of that master planning was um the need for storm drainage and how important it was to have vegetation alongside the road to the lake. And if we're starting to put more pavement towards the lake, I as a water quality person, I would just question what that does to storm drainage right into our lake. So, thanks. Thank you.
And then we did have uh one public comment, again, or Tiber Serebinka, I'll just read, and that's regarding the Leatherwood project. This would certainly be a transformative project in terms of the mass of buildings one and two. Building one along Lake Avenue was especially offered the appearance of the iconic lakefront. Also, the apparent loss of much of the green belt buffer between the lakefront, walkway, and Lake Avenue would personally impact those enjoying the unique lakefront. Let's see whether that counts. So if there's no one else in the audience, um, we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
I, I, I think I say one more. You can leave something. Okay, for six, they found it. This is a great project. What is currently there is awful. It's, it's lappated. We have to do something. Um, and if it's not gonna be this project, it's gonna be another project, so. Um, I, I would rather we work with Jim, make this work, and move on and get something beautiful that is usable space, um, because currently no one's using it, um, and it's nice, so.
Thank you. We would now go ahead and close the public hearing, probably add things to the. Your own head. Real quick, is the commission want to see option two presented? Yes, no, I don't. I mean, I, in my mind, since it's, you were thinking about the open space, but we don't know what else there might be in that plan that may be adverse to you guys, so to me, it doesn't make any sense to show the other plan.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion. Well, and they always have the option to come back, yeah. They're not gonna run, they choose, they choose to change stuff, they're.
So does that prevent from going to the, the board trustees if they want to see that?
It's approved, it'll be approved for the code the way that it is now.
Yeah.
And, um, the board will have the same option that the commission has.
And, and the vote allows for plan refinements between preliminary and final anyway, so it's, there's operating.
Yes, I'm hearing other commissioners.
I agree, I'd like to see this one move forward and see what happens.
Um, hearing consensus of just reviewing what's in front of us. Yeah. Very good. You'd like to do your rebuttal?
Sure, thank you, sure. Um, well, first of all, yeah, I'd say I appreciate the public feedback absolutely. Um, and a smile came to my face when this was mentioned. It's similar to the discussion of the roundabout, right? Um, early in the project's inception, we were showing a much larger scale sort of macro context map, looking at parkways and how they feed in, and how the leatherwood plaza could sort of add to public green space and et cetera, right? And we were focused on much more than what is bound by our parcel limits. We're talking about docks and marinas location and beach extents and et cetera, right? Everything outside of the property line shown on this drawing is a, a part of this project. So we were asked to represent the turnaround as a really viable future option for closing Lake Avenue at some point, right? You could have sort of emergency vehicle bollards at that location, close Lake Avenue to the public kind of thing, and this would be the way for Garfield to function as a dead-end street, right? Along with that, our feedback over time about commercial on-street parking credits as outlined in the code, um, and as I mentioned before, the code sort of calculations that are outlined are varied inside out. They sort of betray themselves. They don't really work very well. Um, and so as of discussion, I believe in our last meeting and the previous few talk about Lake Avenue being full of resident parking, resident guest parking, probably like, and just being generally degraded by the project was a focus of discussion and was somewhat distracting to the project content sort of at hand. So we represented what could happen on Lake if parking was needed there as the code wants it, right? We absolutely do not intend to expand the asphalt coverage of Lake Avenue, especially not down towards the lake itself. Something that we have shown in this plan is right now, the northern edge of Lake Avenue's paving is very inconsistent. And we've straightened it out and added more green space buffer between the boardwalk and Lake Avenue itself. Realistically, what we are planning on is our frontage along Lake Avenue, our property line frontage, gives us on-street parking credits by the code. We are using those credits because we're allowed to. We are not restriping Lake or repaving it and adding twenty-five and a half parking spots to it. Um, the code doesn't require us to. It does allow us to use that frontage for the credits, so that's all it is. So that's all it is. Our intent is absolutely to keep. Lake Avenue green and ideally, and if we had a hand in it, we could help redesign Lake Avenue as a, as a green pedestrian only emergency accessible. Of energy to the community.
The code just gives you credit, it doesn't require you actually have.
No, the code sort of assumes that it's there, doesn't require that you make it happen.
Interesting.
Yeah, but yeah, so all that, we said, I absolutely appreciate the feedback and word of honor, for sure.
How does your. Your boardwalk, like where phase one, two, I guess, is the very eastern side of that, where is that if? With Miyachis, where's that boardwalk coming to Miyachis probably?
So Miyachis has that roof cover that almost hits their property line, right?
The blue, yeah, the awning thing.
Yes, yeah, the awning there, thank you, Josh. Um, so our boardwalk would be on the outside of the property line and would basically allow for, that awning would. Provide some coverage for the new boardwalk, but the new boardwalk would basically enjoy Miyachis right at that awning condition, so. Miyachis covered front patio would be an extension of, of, of the boardwalk at that point, although we would stop building the boardwalk sort of at that farm.
So I mean, are there timbers?
Yes.
Okay, so not, not like where the ordering window is, you're not.
No, no, we're not forcing pedestrians sort of that way, um.
That was my, my question, because I, I assume that if, if you're transforming this lakefront to this level. The town would take on finishing in front of Miyachis to connect it to the, to the Vic and Walkway.
Yes.
Complete that.
Yes, accessory.
Action, so I mean, that's why I was curious where it's.
Kind of where the red paint is now, okay.
Um, I have one question on the open space, uh, one particular one, uh, just on the east side of, uh. Building one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, between the alley and Lake Avenue. There's, uh, two different pictures over there, uh, of showing that. Having like steps going, is it accessible from the alley to walk between those, uh, on the east side of building one to Lake Avenue?
For the residents.
Yeah, it's, it's accessible as in it is technically walkable, there would be a landscape stair and, you know, the grade negotiates almost eighteen feet of like vertical height in that area.
I saw one on the drainage plan that you had it diagonally. Stepping down, but I didn't see on that, you didn't show any steps at all, but yet on some other ones, you have some. Uh, directly east-west.
Yeah, yeah, and the drainage plan, the drainage plan is, is. Purely conceptual, it's just outlining overall sort of major drainage zones and the direction that, that stormwater would be routed, right? It hasn't been coordinated specifically with landscape and civil design, that'll get more detailed, but. Basically, we want to do natural stone claws instead of like big, you know, there are great retainers or something. And so they'll be four-ish feet in height, and there will likely be three or four of them to sort of step down that way with a landscape stone stair. And it would be meant for the leatherwood residents to be able to get to those. The Lake Avenue from, from their alleys for the most part, and the public likely won't, wanna go up to the alley for any reason and rather. Experience some commercial life and late life.
I do like the elevations that you have, uh, from the alley, uh, both looking north and to the south. Uh, and there has been some previous discussions about alleyways being. Also used as walkways and being attractive and, uh, you know, what you have there, uh, it, it's not offensive at all. Uh. However, I still think, you know, from. Getting up on the top of the hill and being able to go up in the alleyway. You know, down to Lake Avenue would be an attractive feature of that open space.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I guess, you know, in light of the previous, um, application we just heard, I guess, can you. Justify how you're meeting the requirement of, buildings should be built up to the boardwalk, not have large setbacks, are you ready about it?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think part of it boils down significantly to should, we, we understand that that's the intent of the code and. Where possible, we brought our buildings right up to the lot frontage. But we find that part of commercial space as the vanity in a town that's so outdoors and recreationally focused is. Having up for seating, having a little bit of outdoor vanity space. Uh, those spaces may look a little bit in plan, um, but the idea is that they're designed with a lot of variability. There's some covered portions, some heated portions, soft seating, hard seating, dining curated and, you know. Able service versus sort of open areas, and so would provide just a mixture of public amenity space. That would be for the good of everyone, um, and enough space out there that. A group knowing about isn't creating a massive amount of noise in small and like patio. Right, um, or constraining, we, we want people to be able to move around each other and have to be open for a little bit of future density.
I guess the only other comment I have, because I, I do think that you guys have done a great job of. Designing this building, not only the, the Grand Avenue, but the, the lakefront side. Well, making public consideration, I think all the comments you've heard over the last, oh, many public meetings you've gone through. I guess that I, we're to nip it, Grand Avenue in particular, it's the, the large windows that are being proposed in the residential units above, that's certainly not. Even on Grand, even on the bottom floor, um, making smaller windows. Keep more with the historic character of the town, so take that into consideration, I guess, as you're, um, working on the final.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll be happy to have that as a mission of approval or whatever, because we agree completely, it needs some more refinement, we're just sort of. Didn't want it without any windows.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions for the applicant before we turn it over to the commission? Okay. With that, public hearing has been closed, so it's been turned to the commission for discussion. And again, Josh, I guess, can you just quickly go over what we are doing as far as approvals? If the recommendation goes that direction?
Yes, sir. So before you is the preliminary plat, preliminary development plan, so again, preliminary, there is the. If it moves forward beyond the board of trustees and they approve the preliminary plan set, the applicant will then work on their final plan set. That's where we'll flesh out the architecture. As noted in staff's memo, we kind of had those similar thoughts to you, Chairman Shaki, about the windows. On some of those upper levels, things like that for character and styling, which you heard the applicant kind of agree with, um, on that. Um, and then that's where we'll flesh out even like the open space treatments, um, so. Where you see the steps or where the steps aren't located, the final, uh, infrastructure plans, a lot of the reports, studies, those things will all be fleshed out in that next step. Um, and at that point, the applicant does have the opportunity, if a code change occurs. To make modifications to their site, keeping intact the general character styling and all the discussion points, but. You know, maybe reducing the open space if that is the direction that goes. And adding more building space, um, kind of in same character, so those are the things the applicant can do between. Uh, preliminary approval, uh, if that occurs and final, so. Tonight for the commission, it's a recommendation to the board of trustees. Um, based on the preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, on what you see and, um, alignment with code, which is noted by staff, we look through everything. Um, and given where it's at the preliminary stage, we find it to, to meet the core code content. Think that's the way I'm gonna phrase that.
All right, thank you. So with that, is there a discussion from the commission?
Well, I just, I would just think, um, say aloud that, um, going back eleven meetings ago, Jim. Uh, when he came and he wanted four stories and a thing that looked like it should be in Laguna Beach. Could we've come a long way. And, um, I think you've addressed all of my issues.
Um, I, I, I really like this plan, I really like the, um. The different architectural styles, so we do know it's one big building, but there. There's enough variety that it is very attractive. Um, I'm really glad that it meets all of the code requirements. Um. And I'm, I'm sorry it took eleven meetings to get to this point. Um, that's frustrating for the applicant, frustrating for us as well. Um, but I, I think this is a good, uh, preliminary plan.
I agree with the, all of what you've done here, I think it's, yeah. Much, uh, much approved, it's fits in, uh, really nice, although I do miss the. That plastic going from, uh, to the avenue all the way down, but, uh. That's, uh, I missed that two days, you know, that was possible in compliance with the code. So, man, this job so far.
Um, I would have to agree, I think we've come a long ways and I think that there's been a lot, a lot of work done on your part. As well as on the part of the town and the community. And, um, sounds like we may have a preliminary plan in.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't have much to add beyond what you've already heard, so I think. It has come a long way, um, the modern part of it has gone away quite a bit and brought in the grand lake elements to downtown. While keeping touches of modern, that's what we want, so, um, I think that's great. I, I agree, it's gonna be a, it's, it's definitely gonna be a transformative project on the lakefront, but, um, overall, I think it looks, it looks good, so. Um, thank you for, for the efforts of going through those eleven meetings, I. You know, I guess it, it sucked, but, um, at the same time, I think this is a product that is under controversy being in this town for the next. Seventy-five hundred years, so it needs to fit in and that's what it took, um, I'm glad you were willing to stick with it, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
With that, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Sure. Uh, I moved to approve resolution fourteen two oh two five. A resolution recommending approval of a preliminary plat and preliminary development plan for new mixed-use commercial and residential development located at ten sixteen Grand Ave. And one thousand one, one thousand five, and one thousand seven, Lake Avenue, commonly referred to as leatherwood development.
I'll second that motion.
Would you like to roll call?
Commissioner Burke.
Yay.
Commissioner.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bishop. Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Fitz. Chairman Shaki.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Richard. Let's go to the bar.
Last one.
Sorry, you can take that off the record. It's too late. Yeah, it's too.
So, thank you for, uh, putting your word. Well, now we for agenda items, so I look into your hand of motions right here.
Well, please, we're voting, do it, sure.
Thank you, Josh. Judy, you wanna say something?
I just wanted to confirm this meeting number twenty-second, is it right meeting, is that correct? We'll be getting back to you and maybe even ask you to come soon. Before, but I'm gonna have Josh, the mayor, to get some dates together and we'll make sure that. You were all part of that decision-making, the final debate, and if it is the twenty-second, then it'll be done. So, they're only already better because I know a lot of us have appointments, permission, and things that we, we deal with it, we, you wanna come for?
You bet.
Well, we'll get that worked out this morning. Uh, one other thing I might ask, because I think. Sorry, gentlemen, notify us. Hey, Scott. Way it goes if there's a tie.
Yeah, and I didn't get it in right now in the draft, so I'll make sure to get it got.
Because I know I always. We obviously can. And this is two times and I got it from both props, the same answer.
And this is where it might help to, you know, put together a. A manual of such a procedure, that could be one of them that's in there that.
I, I said it would be a really good.
And I'm happy to pass on Winter Park at, one of the years of direction. It'd be a template for you to use anyways.
I love it, I get it.
Because Judy, um, alluded to this and I remember this, there was, um, an issue where we had a tie. And it went to the board as approved. In when it should have been denied, according to this new information, do we need to? Is there anything we need to revisit on those?
I'll, I'll take a look and see if there was a change, I do believe that that issue was denied.
Take a motion to adjourn? I was gonna adjourn. Great, I thought we already did that.
Yeah, if you guys don't want those plans, I could use them for Monday, but if you do want them, that's fine.
Thank you.
Actually, I've been talking about.
I'm glad people paying attention, they all.